Thank you. Call the meeting to order, this is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health being held in the Townhouse Auditorium, September 7th, 2021, 6:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology as approved by the Governor's Order of March 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
What do you leave? The United States of America, individual public, individual state, one nation under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
Anyone recording the meeting other than us, please signify in some way. Seeing none, we'll continue. Any minutes?
No.
Are we pretty much up to date or?
Yeah, we are.
The next item on the agenda is a dangerous dog hearing. Are the people here involved with it? Shelley? Flemings?
I think they're expecting the 6:15.
Where are we staying with the new streetlights? We had that meeting. Did we send that list to Pam Hill? And get a quote in the installation date?
I don't know that. I've heard back from her. I know that. But yes, we did speak and she does have a list, sorry.
And the crumbling concrete people aren't going to be here this evening either?
No, she had another appointment and she was looking at the 13th. So if that works for all of you.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I have our annual proposals for environmental monitoring for the landfill. Again, we've used WJF Geo Consultants for the past decade, I think. And their proposal seems to be right in line, 4817, right in line with our number from last year. They really haven't brought it up. But I would like to make a motion to award the contract to WJF for environmental monitoring.
4817.
4817, which is in the But that's the appropriate That's inside our testing amount.
How often are you testing?
Is this the annual?
Any once once a year. Does it do anything different with the solar project going on?
Okay, alright.
It's standard testing.
There won't be any difference. And they also test the wells that are connected nearby.
I will second John's motion.
All in favor? I have a, I have a request from the Veterans of Foreign Wars for a one-day permit for a retirement party to be held on Saturday, September 11th, 2020, from 12 noon to 12 midnight. Who's retiring, you know?
I don't know. Would you like me to get all the details?
Well, yeah, we might want to send them something for the board made proclamation.
I'd like to make a motion that the board approves the FW for one-day permit, September 11th, from 12 noon to 12 midnight.
All in favor? I also have requests from the other request from the town clerk because of the census. And there were census, we have to determine whether you want to be one precinct or multi precincts. Hampton has always been one precinct. Is there any desire to divide us up into 15 or 20 precincts?
Don't think so?
No.
That for me?
Any motion to approve one precinct?
I'm making a motion to continue the longstanding tradition of being a single precinct town.
Second.
All in favor?
We have a meeting, Zoom meeting with the contractor for the Highway Department addition, the Roy. They gave us the information that they will be starting the groundwork this month. They put the order in for the building. Current projection for delivery is February at this point, but of course, we know how the steel market is right now. Once it is, if we don't have a severe winter, and they're saying they can work in anything under two feet of snow, they can clear, obviously market can keep it clear for them. So if they hit that timeline, they anticipate being done in the March, April timeframe next year.
I could give the board an update on the planning board appointments. Certainly, well, I know that you know I would do it for the public. Three residents submitted applications to fill two positions. Those were interviewed last week on September the first. In the meantime, the ad that was published on the website provided a two-week period for applicants to submit. And since September 1st, three more applicants have submitted. The planning board has a regular meeting tomorrow night. And looking at their agenda this afternoon, they do not have interviews with the other three on their agenda for tomorrow night. Although that was something that was being discussed this afternoon. I don't have a timetable for that, but at some point, all six need to be interviewed for the two seats. And then, planning board and the Board of Selectmen meet jointly to make two appointments. Since there are six votes, four votes would be required for appointments.
Do we have any idea when they're going to have those interviews?
No, as of this afternoon, I don't have any information on that. I did speak with their administrative assistant around 2 o'clock today. They do have a new interim chair, and so that's a factor, I guess. Chair basically getting a grip on everything and then deciding when to schedule. The other factor, of course, is that the hearing from July 28th is continued until tomorrow night. And so some decision's going to have to be made there as well.
Well, I would imagine the posting deadline, unfortunately for agendas, would have included them putting interviews on tomorrow night because these applicants came in.
Yeah, they came in. I saw one right before the weekend, but the other two came in apparently today.
So that is supposed to sound the agenda that you will not be having the applicants appointments today?
No, no.
I would call it, it was a recap. I would have said the agenda was more of a recap of candidates for, right?
Well, we are hoping we will have some kind of decision on how we're going to do this, you know, but it's okay.
Actually, it's impressive that we had that much interest in the open position, six people for two spots.
So will you suspect that they will be interviewing these people? They'll have a special meeting next week because they only read every two weeks normally.
Correct. I would think so. Given that they have two hearings that are pending. The one tomorrow night, not sure how that's going to turn out, but on the 15th, they have a continuation of another hearing that was begun on August, I believe, the 11th.
What happens if the, what happens if the applicant says, no, that's fine, I'm not going to agree to another extension? I hope my hearing tonight is scheduled to do it tonight.
One of the difficulties with that
Because the law says they have to agree to
Yes, the petitioner would have to agree either to an extension or to request withdrawal without prejudice. Those are two options that would postpone everything to a future date. When there's a full board, if the applicant, yes, if the applicant says no, we need to do, tonight is the expiration. Planning board will not be able to act until they have four members. They currently have three. Well. I mean, I think the only solution at that point would be to have an emergency session with the Board of Selectmen and appoint at least one person and open the hearing. And make a decision.
Without posting? Without hitting the 48-hour post?
Actually, it is posted.
It is posted, but you don't have a vote from the planning board endorsing a candidate.
No, they don't.
And they haven't met with all interested parties.
Again, I'm not clear on details today. So things could have happened. They might have had some assurance that petitioner will withdraw or else waive the continuation until a later date. So I don't know where things stand with that, but those are the process, process items that
You think they'll share that with us at some point?
As soon as the decision is made, I can get information.
I just don't want this to be constructively approved. That'd be wrong and we're heading down that road. My view. And as far as them making a recommendation, I still adhere to the fact that why can't we sit in on the interview at the same time? A recommendation to me is like, if you said, I'm endorsing Don for selectmen, that's very nice, I appreciate it, but that doesn't mean people automatically vote for me. They say, well, what about the other three candidates, two candidates or one candidate? So they come to me with a recommendation. And then excluded the other people. I'd like to know why they exclude them.
But again, nothing, except last time, nothing recludes us from attending those interview process, which we did. And I think the chair did a good job of pretending you're
He did a very good job. He did a very good job. I appreciate that. But I still contend that, you know, there should be, I mean, I just know every other town that I've seen, the two boards sit down, they interview the people and then they, you know, they make, people make nominations, you know, you nominate this one, John nominates that one. We will, but anyhow, that's that what we are. So we'll have to wait to see what they decide to do with these three people. Do you think they'll interview them?
I would think they will, yes. I would think they will, but I'm not, there's a question over here, Doc.
If you don't have four, the four members on the planning board to make the decision, then does, can, can any decision be made at all? And because they're not a non-functioning board to make a decision. So then, what happens? I mean, it doesn't seem to me that they would get it by default when it isn't through your lack of action, it's through the lack of not having a board. Has this ever been checked?
It'd be lack of action.
Lack of action would be a bruise.
You don't have the board to make any action.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think the law provides for that. I think it just says that
Inaction.
You know, if the board doesn't take action in 90 days or whatever the timeframe is.
The president not vetoing something.
Whether or not there's a board.
Right. So I think the three, the three members tomorrow night
Yes.
postponed, if they get an agreement from the applicant, they can postpone it.
They can do everything on that. They can open the hearing.
Right. The applicant can withdraw without prejudice.
Now, is that because it started with a five-person board? Or is that because that hearing was open as a five-person board? And then now
The law says, state statute says, they need four votes out of five to issue a permit or presumably deny a permit. They have three. The three can act to open the meeting. They can take action on, I think one of the items on the agenda is to appoint a vice chair of the board. They can take action on that. They're just not able to conduct another session of the hearing. First session was on July 28th, so. And this is all new, all new territory in many ways, with a lot of mandated process to try and thread our way through.
Yes, sir. Can you identify yourself?
Jeff Griswold, Hampton resident. Does the Board of Selectmen plan on being there in case the meeting, the planning board meeting does have to have an emergency session?
I mean, I'll be, I'm gonna go.
I would be there as the liaison.
Correct.
I originally planned on being there if we had our joint meeting, yeah.
Okay, so.
One problem, and I think it's a significant one, the agenda that's been posted does not include interviews of the three candidates. So I don't know that that can be legally done tomorrow night.
No, I'm saying if the petitioner calls for a vote right now. Can you three vote with the board?
No, has to be a joint meeting posted.
No, no, no. He's asking about a vote on the permit. We have no input on that.
We have no vote on the permit. No, we have no vote at all on the permit. Only the planning board votes on the permit. We only vote, we can only vote on the vacancy filling the vacancies.
And we've already given our recommendations for the planning that they should pursue additional testing.
Studies, some they may have done, some they may not. Anything else on that?
I think that's up to date.
I just have one other question. I'm curious as to what the difference is between a regular application and an application for a special permit? Why is this a special permit?
Some things are allowed by right under zoning. Some things are allowed by right under the zoning act and some things require a special permit under the zoning act.
So there are no rules for the special permit? I mean, there are no guidelines?
Yes, there are.
And they have to abide by all those guidelines?
But it'd be out the window if
If it is constructively approved.
Right.
Alright, anything else on that? The, are the people for the dog hearing here? I'm trying to remember seat over here.
That chair, we put the light on you right.
Okay, I'm opening the hearing on the other chapter 140, section 157 of Massachusetts general laws regarding dog complaints. The first thing I want to do is swear on the witnesses. So I'll do it just as a group rather than, so Shelley, you're going to testify, yes, sir?
My name is Tracy Thomas Fleming II.
Let's write it down, get his name, please. Is there anyone else who would be testifying? Okay, do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and the pains and pangs of your burden?
Yes, sir.
So we have four incidences over a period of time. The first instance, well, first instance, the, no, the dog, sorry, neighbor called, complained about a dog going after her chickens. The Hampton Police Department was called, an officer went up there and they, later on, the dog officer went up and told the president the dog needs to be kept in the yard, called Sarah. The second incident was
I would like to state the record that he was new to the neighborhood. We just moved in at that moment when the dog, who is 11 years old at the time, decided to make a visit across the street. The chickens were in a cage. She barked at the chickens and ran back.
Okay.
So just to be descriptive about it, she wasn't chasing the chickens around, trying to get chickens. I just feel as we go through this
More of an exploration at that point?
Absolutely, yes, sir. And I have three children of my own, five, four, and one and a half, and all my dogs are very good with them. I regularly have older children that are their age, between five, four, and one, and have given them nonsporadic time. They're very good with new people and children.
And how many dogs do you have?
I have four, sir. Two are 11 years old and two are, they just turned one years old.
Are they all pit bulls or?
Yeah, I don't like this. I try to stay away from that phrase. None of my dogs have extremely large heads and big stout bills. I have Staff Bull Terrier, who is 11 years old, and then I have two small puppy mixes. I'm not, I'm uncertain, we haven't taken to get their blood work done yet. But my female has more of a thin nose and the male does have a little bit more of a broad face, but all in all, not fighting dogs or trained poorly. But they have gotten out twice, the puppies, and have done their exploring too, as puppies. But I would also like to say that their training is coming to keep and we are seeing a profound amount of growth with them lately and they are being much more responsive to any and everything.
How big are the puppies?
One is probably 45 and the other one's probably 60 pounds, the male and female. They're, they're pretty much, you know, they're a year and three months. I don't think they'll grow much bigger.
When you say you were new to town, when was that?
We moved in a year and a half ago.
A year and a half ago? So that was when the first incident was over a year ago?
Yes.
Okay. And all these incidents that were reported, are they all the same dog or different dogs?
No, one was Madison, who's 11 years old, and she got, found herself out across the street. Two reports were the puppies. They knew there was water down behind the house, so had a fence put up and it was, you know, 90 degrees. So they went exploring out back on two occasions and then this previous one was our oldest male dog, who himself is 11, turning 12, and he was just let out and apparently he barked at the person at the end of the driveway. This is something normal for him. He doesn't have an attack clothes on at that point. My wife was immediately alerted. She said he heard him bark again and she was at the door. Now, to her negligence with letting what she understands as an old man who just stays on the property out is not the truth to the general public. They see a dog and it's off-leash. It can raise some, you know, fear and concern, and I completely understand that. So as, I'm sorry to interrupt, gentlemen. But as we go forward and as we have been reacting to understanding and me having pointed, a very pointed conversation with my wife recently about how the dogs need to be kept as if, you know, they're, they're not, you know, you're trusting, you know, everybody else doesn't trust them. So they need to be caged, so they need to be locked to the cage. So we have recently constructed a six-foot cage with 50 by 30, right behind our house, that you can, from inside the house, leash the dog, bring the dog to the kenneling area, open the kenneling area, go into the kenneling area, shut the kenneling area, and then let the dog off-leash at that. There's a four-by-four buried in the ground four feet to receive the runner that goes from the house to the dog kenneling area. And that's our immediate response to the situation that we are currently in.
Last night they called me, they're doing a really nice job.
Was it completed, the fence?
I'm 95% there. It's I'm going home to work on it tonight and within the next two days, it should be completed. And she should be able to, and I also like to say that through all of the chaos, we have the one-year-old who's now eating solids and not nursing, and we have the five-year-old who is now going to school with three medals and having a great time. So she now has a lot of
Free time to spend with the dogs.
Yes, more, more availability to be as, as engaged as she needs to be with all that she has going on. I support everything she does and she wanted the dogs, so here we are.
And you've been fined, and you've been fined, you've been fined twice and you pay the fine?
Yes, sir, immediately.
And Shelley, you think this is a good resolution?
Yes, they've done a really nice job and they've always been very respectful and nice and polite. They have never been meaner. You know, they always agreed that it was their fault.
I'll tell you, I tell you what, why don't we, if this is all right with the board, that we continue this hearing for two weeks?
Sure.
See how you're doing?
Yes.
And we'll go from there and we'll just, we'll just continue for two weeks and Shelley, you'll fill us in how they're doing. If it's all set up properly and everything, we'll just close the hearing and that'll be the end of it, so.
21st.
21st, yeah, right. So I appreciate your coming in and explaining and the positive actions you've taken already, you know, even paying the fines is a big, a big thing and we appreciate it.
That's huge.
Thank you for acknowledging that. I don't need to take up any more of the time.
20th, I'm sorry.
So the 20th?
20th.
Okay, and Shelley, you'll fill us in on anything. Alright, thank you.
Thank you for taking the steps.
Shelley, quickly, on the other two, we've had, have any working out? We have the South Road and we have the Main Street?
Yes.
Except Main Street hasn't paid the fine.
We'll get that.
They have our collection lyric. Alright. Just on the fire station, we had our
What's the letter of support? Did we already draft something or a waiting?
No, we didn't listen to them. I think they have pre, things for the legislatures.
Do we want to ask, because Lester has been really controlling a lot of that. Can we just let both their, their chief of staff know that we've got it on our agenda for next week?
Robin knows that.
So let Joel know as well for Eric.
Talking about Lester, is there any, you spoke a little about the property or any?
Yeah, sir. Right now, the governor, as you heard, wants to use money for something else. Of course, he'd like if he took care of the unemployment hole that he created, $3 million.
The fire station, we toured the East Long Meadow Fire Station.
Thanks to the department, we're very welcoming.
You're doing a letter to them, right? And they were, they're very welcome and it was very interesting.
And the challenges they had as well, and they shared them with us.
We're planning to visit two more.
I think their biggest challenge was, they said, to a space, they were constrained on space too.
Well, I have to say, I did learn that about, I would say 40% of the space, maybe 30, 35% of the space was bunks, day room, kitchen, lockers, exercise room, conference room.
Hidden her bathroom.
Hidden her bathroom thing.
An administrative room.
An administrative room. Because they have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, three Because they have twenty-four hour, seven-day-a-week three trips, yes. Yes, ma'am?
As Chair of the Capital Bank Committee, I'd requested that I attend the next tours. And I'd like a little more information on, uh, on what was learned at, uh, in the East on that tour.
Then, so, so biggest thing I got out of it was that there was a lot of, they had a lot of space. Uh, you, like I say, for bunks and, and that type of thing because they have twenty-four hour station. We don't have a twenty-four hour station. I don't think we'll be seeing that in the very near future, so. The other thing was that the, they did have very good spacing in between the, uh, turnout gear. And the fire engines were safe for them to get dressed.
Twelve feet, I think.
Like twelve feet, yeah. You know, right? And we're like, what, you know?
But I still think it's amazing how, when they built that, they thought that was gonna be, you know, the catch me out and then. You know, ten, ten years later, oh my gosh, we're out of room.
They're, they're stuck in a position where they can't expand the footprint because of the, the landfill it was built on. So they can't go anywhere other than up.
Is that on Summers?
Yes, my next to police station.
Police station, it's on the built-up, the land, they used former landfill there.
How many bays?
They have, uh, four bays, four bays, but they're back-to-back bays.
The drive-throughs, straight through.
Drive, drive straight through, yeah. And they had, uh, they had the same type of, uh, ventilation equipment that we had. That we just installed. Yeah, let's see, what else is directly? Oh, they're, they're getting rid of one of their big. One of their big.
They're taking two primaries, trading one in.
Right.
Rolling one into a secondary.
Right, so they get rid of one.
They get rid of one.
More specific on that primary secondary?
So they have two vehicles right now that are daily use vehicles if a fire is called.
Tank.
Their tank, they're, they're, they're not really tankers because they don't store water. They're more of their first responder fire vehicles. So they have a ladder truck. And then they have two regular, I, I, tankers for better, for lack of a better term, but they're two engines. That they use for their, their calls that don't require a ladder. One of them is getting traded in for the purchase of a new, modern, um, response vehicle. One of them is gonna come out of service as a daily use to be of a backup. So if something ever happened, they have that backup ready to go. So when I say secondary, it's more of a, a backup, not a. There to fill a need of a hole for some reason, a breakdown, uh, a secondary fire or something like that.
And one of the reasons they're doing that is for insurance, right?
Insurance was lower with the secondary vehicle and a backup vehicle.
When was it built?
I think you said.
Ninety-seven, oh, three, I think, yeah.
Was there any issue of, um, modern current vehicles being too large for the base?
They have tall bays. I didn't want to say they're twenty-foot doors, maybe?
And wide?
Yeah.
And what?
Wide enough also.
Yeah, yeah, wide enough because they fit their ladder truck in there, no problem. And that's, that's tall.
And they have two, two ambulances?
Two ambulance, actually, I think, three ambulances.
Cause they're busy all the time.
They can't handle all the ambulance calls.
They're, they're quite a bit of service from Action.
I think they said our action ambulance has been over there a hundred and sixty-five times this year.
At least once a day.
At least once a day.
You don't have dates when you have tours.
No, no.
They also had, uh, the fire cleaning equipment, um, for their, their turnout gear. So they have separate washer and dryer for regular clothes, but then they have one for the carcinogens and stuff like that, a fire apparatus. And it was, it was a pretty decent machine. It was, it was at its own space, its own little, you know, decompression area, I guess we'd call it, where they would put all the, the, the dry that they had washed.
Yeah, the question I had for that, and I don't think they answered it, was if they're washing that stuff in the washer, where does that go? I mean, are they dropping it into the, you know, basic water sewer system? Would we be constrained because of the upset that would be, have to have a tight tank or something coming out of that? If we're deconning the equipment, it seems like you wouldn't want that dropping into the groundwater. That'd be a question for our next tour, I think.
So they also said they got a state grant to do all the equipment too.
Yeah.
Right, and I'm sure they sent that maybe off, off site.
They come in.
They made a way, but I mean, you know, they're probably tight tanking and they're not.
No, I don't think it was a grant. I think they just said the state does it.
State just does it?
Yeah, they'll come in and clean your equipment.
I guess I'm not really clear, John, your point is good. When they clean the, um, gear that's been involved in a fire. So they hose it off or whatever they do, where, your question was, where does that waste water go?
Well, basically, if they're saying they have a separate washer for deconning the equipment.
Right.
Where's the gray water going from that washer?
And you don't have the answer yet.
I don't, I don't have.
We have.
Question for next tour.
We have one here, and it is, I think it's filtered, and I don't know, like you said, I don't know where it goes.
Right. And a filtering system may be just something typical.
It might be part of the machine address.
And then fiberglass air tanks.
Yeah.
Lisa, I think I told you via email that we're looking at Wednesday or Friday for the next tours.
Like Wednesday tomorrow?
Wednesday tomorrow, yeah, give a tag, tomorrow or Friday.
They're gonna get back to it.
Yeah, we have, we don't have set times yet, but that was our.
All right. Special, uh, review of special town meeting warrant articles?
The other thing I had, and I think I had sent you know this up, I recall during our initial conversations with. Oh, golly, Peter and Mary, or whoever was doing the bridge thing, that we were gonna get thirty-four thousand, but it was gonna require a match. From the town for some amount, and this is the engineering study. And I know Bobby just said that we can use our chapter ninety money for it. But we've already gone ahead and allocated our chapter ninety money for March projects. So if there is some small component to match, let's just find that amount appropriated at special town meeting and put it in the bank.
Okay.
Because as warrant article, it doesn't expire. We don't have to worry about the timing.
I have a question about that. We, we have one for a highway truck and then that's not the Kubota thing, is that one of it?
Separate, no, those are the F ones, F two fifty.
Does he have two fifty? So he wants a, he wants a backhoe?
He's looking for a small excavator type thing. We've been renting them, you know, all along. Actually, look at the project we approved for the park, you know, putting that piping in next to the softball field. That's using his typical excavator rental that is in the drywall. If they're doing cleaning out of ditches, they might be using a small excavator for that.
When do we have to have these articles done?
That's the next question. We need to pick a date to close the warrant. If we're doing.
October eighth, yeah.
We need to find out from, I think we're going, are we planning on having, uh, Dick Fratello in next week to talk about the financial?
Yes, I have, I set aside two dates for the board to review and sign. I believe the last day that you can sign, like October the fourth.
Correct.
For the next meeting of the board, whenever that is, I'll have a draft. In fact, I'll, I'll email you a draft so you can look it over. And as long as we sign by the fourth, we're fine. Can we still meet with advisory too?
Well, they're gonna have their hearing, but the, the time for a special town meeting is different than a, a regular job meeting. It's a little longer. There's a two-week period instead of a single week. So we need to check with Carol and Doug as to when they wanna have their hearing. Obviously, they'd like our, the warrant before that, yeah. I think you're lining up on the fourth. Looks like all the stars are coming up on that date. So Don, you'd be looking to close at the twenty-seventh.
So let's meet, so we're gonna meet with Dick and then on the thirteen. How's Cliff, by the way?
He called today. He called today. He did, uh, suffer a severe injury in a vertebra. He's going to have to have an operation. He's learning this afternoon. He learned this afternoon when that will be. I did talk to Dick and I talked to, uh, the assistant there, Suzie, and they assured me. That they can hold the finances of the town together during his absence. And that, uh, at least until the town meeting, they don't anticipate any issues or problems.
All right, so we're gonna meet with them on the thirteen next week. All right, uh, I wanted to jump over and do the selectors' reports and we'll. Get these things done and we'll go to the executive session.
Uh, quickly, I think we're all pretty well aware what's happening with, in the concept, or sorry, planning board world. C O A, uh, meeting is next week. Housing again, didn't have a meeting, lack of forum, so then next week will be next month. Uh, historic had a, I don't know if I mentioned last week, excellent open house, I think.
Historical society.
Historical society, uh, there's a presentation, Frank, you wanna report on that?
Yeah, Historical Commission is having a presentation on September ninth, at seven P M here in Town Hall. Uh, they're gonna go over the pros, cons, and answer any questions with a presentation. Of having a national historic register in town in Old Hamden Village. Um, they're gonna answer all the questions that people may have concerns. It'll be a good informational session on Thursday. And it will be on Zoom as well, recorded for viewing then or later. Parks, no, they didn't have a meeting, so.
No response.
How's your inventory?
Coming along, I'm sure.
Anything, uh, back to parks again, no answer from our cleaning on a quote?
Yeah.
And I did see, I did see that they posed that they closed the spray park again today because it needs to be power washed.
Here on the side of Clash for safety.
Yeah, they said it was slippery.
They did hire one person to start maintaining and cleaning and he's, he's been down there quite a bit. He said, when I talked to, put in thirty hours, doing maintenance and cleaning around the park, didn't care what he can.
D A report?
Okay, I'll go through this quickly. Police negotiations are underway. Two sessions have been held. I have one tomorrow as well. The, we had talked about a public forum, uh, to address. The ARPA funds, the so-called American Rescue Plan Act, uh, from Washington. Where the town is going to receive a million and a half dollars. We talked about a public forum, uh, to let the public voice any interests or concerns about the spending of those funds. We've already committed somewhere between seven hundred and nine hundred thousand for the waterline extension project. Depending upon, you know, the final number there, but we'll still have sizable sum of money remaining. Uh, I'm suggesting September twenty-first or twenty-second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to really see that more in October. We have a lot going on here with, uh, especially getting ready for the town meeting, our financial. Uh, especially with the injured key person and.
Yeah, we can put it off.
There's no rush, there's no pressure.
Right, it's something the board wants, it wasn't really required.
Okay. Also, I spoke with, um, uh, Mary Thurlow of the State Gambling Commission today. Regarding the crosswalk project. Uh, I submitted a proposal to them. Quite a while back, I think in June. There are two steps in Boston. One is that they have a committee that reviews all the proposals. And then secondly, the gambling commission itself, the gaming commission, I'm sorry. Um, have to use the correct euphemism. Um, the, the gaming commission, uh, has to vote on it. Uh, the technical committee has met. Uh, they wanted me to answer a few more questions. We had a Zoom conference today. I believe we've answered the questions. And they had asked for some statistics on accidents along Summers Road and Allen Street. I asked the chief of police to produce that and he did produce a chart. Which, uh, I just got it this morning and I gave it to them this afternoon. I'll send the copy to the board. Want to look at it? And they've also asked for, uh, information about the design of the sidewalk project that the D O R funded.
I have that. I have that.
I, I had asked if we had an electronic copy and I knew we had a paper copy. Uh, so they're gonna, they're gonna want that. Anyway, they pushed off the decision. And their meeting from September the ninth to September the twenty-third. This is really pushing it in order to get that project completed before the snow flies, so. I'm very disappointed, but nothing we can do.
What was the total cost of the, the equipment and installation?
Uh, we're looking at, uh, well, if we count the twenty-three thousand for the digital radar device. Uh, and it looks like around thirty and thirty-two thousand for the other. Other, uh, uh, equipment and materials. Radar device was approved though.
I thought that was approved, yeah.
It is, but I mean, so we're being outstanding. The question is, how much of the hundred thousand will we use? It's gonna be about that.
How much are you asking to be approved by the gaming commission?
I'm asking for that as well. That's part of the package that, uh, needs their approval.
Well, what rest of the package needs approval?
The total with the digital radar device, plus the crosswalk installation. Plus the signage and so forth, it's gonna take us to about fifty-three thousand at this point.
Right, but I thought the radar device was already approved.
No. No, it's in the package.
This is a second radar device.
Pardon?
Oh, no, that, we got, not the one that we bought.
The one that we bought, yes.
Isn't that, isn't that?
In the package, okay. So that wasn't pre-approved or, no? Uh, not it was.
I thought, yeah, so we spent that out of.
I, I, I told her that we were buying it and, uh, no response. I, I think the commission may very well be inventing the process as we go along. Because I, I, I informed them that we were gonna do it. And then I was told later, well, no, you have to put that in the package, so.
Or wait till the twenty-third?
Yes, um, I do think that we're in good shape and it's gonna be approved. Just would like to see it done because it's, it's a safety measure.
I mean, you have to keep in mind, this is the same outfit that awarded us the money. He didn't tell us for three years, so.
He already sent the check. So here, spend the money. Oh, wait, check on those first.
Well, we did have a member from Springfield on that commission and he did so well that he's been promoted to the marijuana commission.
Yeah, but when I presented.
True story, I'm not, I'm not.
But Bob, when I presented in front of him, he had to accuse himself because he knew one of our members.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
So just to backtrack, they gave us a hundred thousand dollars to use on traffic mitigation solutions.
We received a hundred thousand dollars as mitigation for any impacts. The Springfield Casino, the MGM Casino would have on traffic or safety in the town of Hamden. Well, if it has any impact, it's gonna be along Allen Street and Summers Road because that would be an artery taking people. Right into down, into some, in Summer Avenue probably, and then right into downtown. So that's where the focus of spending.
Is there any chance they won't approve the fifty-three thousand on that package?
I don't think that there's, it's gonna be, I think it will be approved, right? I mean, they were fairly positive today.
It just, it concerned me to keep putting it off.
Well, I think it's all about process and I don't know that they have a lot of established process, so. Let's see, what else? I just wanna let everyone know that we're continuing to work on the Cumberland Farms issue. Cumberland Farms was sold to a company in London, but they've kept local headquarters in Massachusetts. Building Commissioner has sent another letter to them, uh, citing violations. Uh, we are waiting for a response. If they don't respond, the building commissioner has another step. That I think will be very important and will increase pressure on the company to improve that area. So.
This is second violation?
Yes, the first violation was sent right before COVID. There was no response to it. I think part of what was going on probably was the purchase of the company by a London firm, but, uh, we haven't received a response, he sent the letter two weeks ago. If we don't, uh, we're gonna form a committee, and the committee would go over and cite all violations, and a letter would be sent, make, make the improvements, bring this building up to code, or the town will do it and attach a lien to the property. That usually succeeds, because I know that it's been on the market, and if we take that next step, it'll be difficult to sell that property with a lien and so forth, so. Well, so that's, um, so I, that's the report, much of my time this past week has been spent, uh, in discussions of the various process issues involved with the planning, uh, board, filling the vacancies, and then acting on these two petitions for, uh, storage at, uh, at Summers Road.
Alright, uh, okay, so, uh, we have two items that we, uh, determined we need to go to the executive session on, one is the litigation with the Hamden Wilbraham Regional School District, and the other one is, uh, collective bargaining with the, uh, Hamden Police Union Association, uh, from which, uh, we will adjourn, we will not go back to books.
Don, another question, yeah.
Craig had asked me to come tonight to talk about COVID.
Oh, I just wanted you to get numbers to the board.
Numbers, you're allowed to give before, I know we talked this morning and there are some, yeah.
I, I have them if you want.
Fire away.
Okay, I did ten days back. I went to Maven and went ten days back because that's when you would be contagious and in quarantine for ten days. We had on the twenty-ninth, we had three adults, one child. Two of the adults were vaccinated, one was unknown, that have come down with COVID. Uh, they will be out of quarantine tomorrow. On the thirtieth, we had two adults, unknown whether they were vaccinated or not, they'll be out on Thursday, not in quarantine. On the thirty-first, we had no new cases, on the first, we had two adults and one child. The, one of the adults was vaccinated, one of them is unknown whether they are or not, they're out on Friday, out of quarantine. On nine-two, we had four adults, all unknown whether they were vaccinated or not, one teen and one child, they'll be out of quarantine.
So that's, that's six? Four adults, one teen, one child.
Yes, correct. And they're out on Saturday, and then on the third, we had two adults, both unknown, and they'll be out on Sunday. So a total of, um, thirteen adults, three children and one teen. But starting tomorrow, they'll be, we will.
Right off, right off the list.
And they'll be off the list, correct?
And what's their positivity rate, you know?
We have seventeen people.
Four point one.
Good luck.
Four point one.
Sometimes to me, then every reports from the state include some wrong numbers, because they count us as in the county, so sometimes we'll get, I just had two taken off that were Springfield, they weren't even us. So sometimes they get put on the wrong place, which skews our numbers, that much I can.
Thanks, Jane.
And you want it every week, so I will.
I was just curious, you know, what we had, yeah, just.
Absolutely, every week I'll update and do a report.
Yeah, you could just email it or however it works.
Okay.
Yeah.
If that's good with you.
Yeah, that, that was, that was kinda what I was alluding to, but I'm glad you came, so.
I'm happy to do that.
Thanks, Jane.
Not a problem.
Anybody else got an issue?
Quickly, we're having, uh, Bob, there's gonna be an update meeting on fifty, uh, the Main Street water thing is progressing well. Uh, they finished with Concom. Please, let me look at bird check. And let me, those, bits back going out.
Check, upper heel check.
Alright, so we have two items this evening for executive session, in turn the executive session, one is the uh, litigation with the Hamden Wilbraham Regional School District, and the other one is the board will review contract proposal with the Hamden Police, and we will, uh, uh, adjourn from those, we will come back into open session.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to enter executive session, first for the purpose of, uh, reviewing with our council the status of the current litigation with the Hamden Wilbraham School District, and second, so the board can, uh, review ongoing contract negotiation status with the, with the control union, without a return to open session.
Second.
Okay, John?
John, what I?
Donald, Dan, what I?
Greg, what's that?